Okay, welcome to the work session business meeting of September 9th, 2021. We convened an executive session at 6:05 this evening for four matters of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law or the Taylor Law. So we are just reconvening now. So we'd like to start with a pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. Just for you to know, the protocol for board meetings is posted in the back. There's also agendas and the protocols on the back of the agenda. There's also separate agendas as well as any other paperwork that you may want for this evening. So if you don't have one and you want one, you need to get one. So are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the listed items on the agenda? Okay, then we're going to move to the consent agenda. So I'd like a resolution.
Resolved and approved consent agenda, items two through nine are presented to the Board of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
We're approving the minutes from the August 19th and 30th board meetings. We're approving CSC CPSC placements. We're approving additions to the substitute list. We're approving changes to the club and advisors listing. We're approving unpaid day for a staff member. We're approving additional work time for staff members outside of the school responsibilities. We're accepting generous donations from Mrs. Joan Kleingrass and the Hope for Youth Foundation for the John Kleingrass Scholarship and from Grace Methodist Church for supplied filled backpacks for students in need, and we're approving addition to the summer program.
Second.
Now, let's see, that was the questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
That was questions.
That wasn't.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes? So now we're going to go into presentations and reports. So the first presentation is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll start with just my traditional report and then I'll jump over for a quick little presentation. So we were thrilled to welcome our students back to schools this fall last week for two days and then two more days this week. Just the energy level within the schools and within our classrooms, it was really great, something that we've been missing all summer and the students and the teachers, everyone's enjoying being back together in all of our buildings. The process that began over the summer in terms of creating our district goals continues, and I'll have a more thorough report on what our district goals are, but I did want to highlight what the outcomes of that work was. So the Board meets during a board retreat over the summer, then our administrators meet along with the Board, and we use those opportunities to develop what will be sort of our vision and goals for the upcoming school year. So this year, the 21-22 school year is really framed by three priorities. The first is reflect, the second learn, and the third thrive. And I'll provide a little bit of feedback or information where those each come from. Reflect is really sort of a social emotional piece. I think everybody on the Board, everybody in our district, everybody in this room has experienced some level of trauma over the past 18 months, whether it be personal, whether it be someone you know, whether it be loss of a job, whether it be locked in your home, whether it be wearing masks. There's certainly been a great deal of trauma that's been experienced by all, and I think it's important that we all take time to recognize that and for our teachers to recognize that our students are coming into our buildings with some sense of trauma as well. Some students haven't been in a school building in 18 months. Again, students have experienced loss, students have experienced quarantine, and I just think it's important that we take the time to recognize those feelings, have those conversations, and making sure that we're all looking out for and supporting each other. So that's the reflect piece. Under learn, it's my hope over the last 18 months, we did a lot of things that we needed to do to do the best we could to educate students, some of those things we hope to never have to do again. But there's certainly things that we learned over the past 18 months that we can continue to use moving forward. One example is many teachers were forced to really change how they deliver instruction, utilize technology in meaningful ways to enhance their instruction, and I think there's a lot of learning that happened over the last 18 months that teachers will continue to use moving forward. The last piece is thrive, and I think this is the most important piece. I think the time has come for us to begin looking forward and setting our sights on what school will look like when this pandemic is eventually over. So what does it look like moving forward? Hopefully bring a sense of optimism as we continue progressing through this and hopefully reaching a resolution soon and really being future focused. My fear is I don't want to spend an entire year rehashing what was lost last year and everything that didn't work well, but instead I really want to be forward focused and have everyone think about where we're going, how we're going to get there, and eventually how we're going to overcome this. So those are the three main themes of our board goals for the upcoming school year. There's obvious those action items that come underneath this regarding fiscal responsibility and all those other items, so I'll have a more complete presentation, but I did want to share an overview as to what our guiding principles will be for the upcoming school Just a quick update on our capital project, the middle school bathrooms and gym are complete. Those spaces were open when the students returned the first day, and it's some much needed space and much needed updates to space in the middle school, and we're thrilled to be able to get those spaces open before the school year. As many are aware, Mr. Chickery has left Putnam Valley to assume a position in Eastchester, and we've been quickly working through the interview process to find a replacement for the assistant principal of the elementary school. The screening process has been completed. We've invited four finalists back for the more formal committee interviews. As many in the public may have seen, we sent out our interest survey for parents who are interested in sitting on that. If you have not done so already and interested, I would encourage you to reply, and those are scheduled for the 13th and 14th. So we hope to be able to recommend, I hope to recommend, the next assistant principal for the elementary school at our next board meeting on September 22nd. There are a couple of events, there's actually two communications that will be sent out tomorrow. One is a COVID update. I wanted to, I know there's been some misunderstanding regarding what the difference between our remote and quarantine instruction is, so I'm making an attempt to clarify what was meant by remote, which was really sort of last year's model where families got to opt for remote learning over in-person learning, and as many are aware, that option is no longer in existence. But what the difference is between that and quarantine instruction, which is the district's obligation to continue to instruct students that are placed on quarantine, and the fact that that still comes with an expectation of face-to-face virtual instruction with the teacher as well as some asynchronous assignments over the course of that time. So I know there's been some conversation about quarantine students not being provided any remote instruction, and I think that's just the miscommunication between, there certainly will be face-to-face instruction for students who are quarantined, only for students that are quarantined, but students that are quarantined will still have that opportunity to continue learning. So communication, explaining that, as well as just clarifying what was meant by the absence that's associated with the quarantine. An excused absence simply means you're not present, we need to be able to count for who's in the building and who's not, but obviously there's no detriment to the student and that that student will still continue to be able to learn. So be on the lookout for that tomorrow for more information, and don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. Your best source of information is always going to be the school district. So I encourage you, if you hear anything that you don't seem right, or if you're hearing anything otherwise, don't hesitate to reach out and we'll get you the accurate information as soon as possible. The next piece is very surreal to me, is Saturday marks the 20th anniversary of September 11th, and as I was preparing my statement for this, it occurred to me that there's not a single student in any of our school districts that was even alive when that happened. For me, the personal piece is I was actually in this building, working on September 11th, 2001, as a teaching assistant, having just graduated from college, but I know everyone knows where they were, when they found out, when they heard, and everybody has stories. But I really want to take an opportunity to acknowledge what's a very meaningful event, to take that opportunity to make sure that our students really understand the sacrifice of the heroes that were not only rushing towards danger at the point in time, but also those who were sifting through rubble only to experience disease many years later. So that's a bit of a somber piece, but it's something that I think is important opportunity for us as adults to be a reminder to take the opportunity. My boys, nine and 12, obviously not alive when 9/11 happened, but certainly an opportunity for me to have conversations with them and for them to understand and appreciate all that happened, as well as what sort of how the United States came together afterwards. Just a couple of quick reminders regarding upcoming events. Our back-to-school nights, elementary school, 9:13 and 14, middle school, 9:21 and 22, and the high school, 9:30. There'll be a virtual athletics back-to-school night scheduled on 9:14, and just a reminder, if you've not seen it, the Fan Store is now open. There's a ton of merchandise available for all sports, as well as just PV gear. The elementary school back-to-school picnic is scheduled for 9:17. We have our board retreat, we'll be working with a consultant at the Putnam Valley Town Library at 9:21. Our next board meeting, as I mentioned before, is 9:22, and at that meeting will be an external auditor's report. For anyone who's not been here for an external auditor's report, it's riveting.
Best meeting of the year.
Best meeting of the year. Normally the architects go afterwards, I feel bad. There'll also be the communities that care will be here discussing the youth risk survey. And then on 9:23 is our high school financial aid night. Should I go over there, Dan, does that make it easier? So my last piece for this evening is I wanted to take an opportunity to provide an update regarding the work that was started several months ago regarding diversity, equity, and inclusivity, and what was really a priority-setting activity. The protocol that was used by both our parent representatives, so we were able to welcome 40 parents to be part of that parent work group, obviously not all 40 can make it, but everyone who expressed interest, who is a parent of a child currently in our school, was able to, was invited to participate, and this is the protocol that was followed. The same protocol was followed for our teachers and staff members when they returned to school during the superintendent's conference day. The process began with individual brainstorming, a small group share, each individual prioritized sort of the goal that they thought was most important. The group had an opportunity to consolidate goals. If people and the multiple individuals within that group agreed, then it was a large group share, and ultimately everyone was able to pick the top three from across the entire room in terms of setting that priorities. It was actually an excellent evening. I couldn't have been happier how it all worked out. We started off by setting some ground rules and what some expectations were, and we reviewed some survey data, which was really meant to show despite all that we hear and feel that regardless of what side of sort of your beliefs lie on, that there's really a great deal of understanding and consensus that already exists. And at our heart, all parents, myself included, only want what's best for their children. They want to protect their children, and they want their children to feel valued when they're out at school, and I think all parents share that same need. So it was really a productive evening, and I was very happy with the results of the work of our parent committee. So this is sort of verbatim, the priorities that received the highest interest or the most votes from the parent work group. The first being all children should be celebrated equally as opposed to specific groups involving students in this process, especially at the middle school and the high school level. Celebrate what unifies us, not what divides us. Focus on character qualities. Implicit bias training for staff, driven by the data we receive from the DEI framework. Develop a curriculum that is inclusive of race, social, and emotional development. So those are the four priorities that emerged from the parent work group of 40 parents who were invited. So our elementary school teacher work group, and I hope you start to see some similarities, this is all teachers and staff members in the elementary school, it shouldn't just be teachers. Include resources that represent all students, disabilities, ethnicity, socioeconomic backgrounds. Use diverse visuals, language, and materials. Celebrate and accept each other's similarities and differences, representing all cultures physically across literature. Students like to see characters who look like them. Teaching kindness, respect, acceptance, including community parents in the school. Sharing facts on both sides of hot topics while remaining neutral. Middle school staff. Create an environment where all students feel welcomed and supported. Sensitivity training, work with students on how their communications come across. Safe space to share experiences and opinions without judgment or negativity, negative commentary. High school. Safe spaces for conversations as well as resources and support. Student feedback on district celebration of diversity, varied content, open discussions, featured speakers, faculty, staff, education, and training. Now, the buildings did this in complete isolation from each other, so the elementary school wasn't working with the middle school, it wasn't done before, they were doing it really at the same time across three different buildings. So the good news is between our parent work group and our three staff work groups, there were some themes that emerged. These are just my words, I was trying to capture them for a slide, but certainly the theme of celebrating all students emerged across several groups. In fact, the parents identified celebration twice. Training, including implicit bias and sensitivity, as well as other trainings for our staff members. Creation of safe spaces within our learning environment, spaces that are open for discussions and differing perspectives. Curricular resources, choosing materials with appropriate settings, characters, and backgrounds, so all students feel as if their background is represented in the literature. And the development of personal traits, respect, kindness, acceptance, and et cetera. So I thought this was the most positive piece. When you venture into something where you really have no say what individuals come up with, your greatest fear is everybody says something different. And I think what we were quickly able to see is that everyone was really saying the same type of things. Again, our educators love the students that come into their classrooms and our buildings every day, and they want the same things that our parents want of our students, and many of our faculty and staff, our parents themselves, and entrust their schools to do what's right for their children when they send them off. So in the end, I really felt that this was a great opportunity to realize how much we have in common and how everyone really wants what's in the best interest of students. So next steps. The first step in this process was the parent and staff priority setting, so that was accomplished. Our next step will be student feedback that'll happen at the middle school and the high school. So students will be provided an opportunity to provide feedback on what was set as priorities from the parents and staff, and ultimately the committee, which will be inclusive of both parents and student representatives as well as the teachers, will decide on what of those items they think we can tackle this year. And that's a summary of where we are in that process.
Jeremy, will that be on the website?
Sure.
Yes? Okay. Board, have any comments or? I'm happy to see agreement. At a time when things seem very divisive, to find that people really have, like Jeremy said, that common grounding, I think is a really positive sign for us moving forward and making Putnam Valley schools something that we're all proud of. I like the engagement piece, and I'll be really interested to see how the students respond to the adult priorities, if they have some of their own or agree with their parents and teachers, which would be nice too, so.
Really nice synopsis, Jeremy. It really did show that the words were different, but the come from was similar in every work group. Who said a safe space, who said welcoming space, but the idea was the same. So that was, it is nice to see that, and nobody, I mean, I think everybody can agree, we want everybody treated with respect. It seems like a no-brainer, common sense, so I love that that's the direction we're going in.
I agree. I thought of what we have so far as very valuable. I'm looking forward to seeing the end product, and I hope we don't wait too long, I hope the time doesn't expire too long before we see that end product.
Just one other public service announcement for the parent committee members. We shared the current draft of the district policy related to this as an opportunity for parent feedback, and we have heard back from some of those parents on the committee, but I did promise them an opportunity to further inform that policy before it comes before the Board for the next reading, so that could happen as soon as next board meeting. So if any parents who are on that parent work group have not done so already, now would be a great opportunity for you to fill out the form regarding the draft policy and any suggestions you may have.
Our next report is Dr. Doherty's report.
Sure. So really, I'm just recommending that we adopt, can you hear me?
I don't know. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
A little bit louder?
There you go.
Okay, there I go. Let me just move it forward. Okay. So Title IX is sexual harassment policy for students, and it's a required policy. There were some changes in the laws, so our attorneys recommended this policy be changed, and again, it's a required policy. There's plenty of copies at the table over there, it's online. If anybody has any comments, this is the first reading. It's a pretty standard student policy. There are two, right now there are two Title IX officers, that's myself and Jackie Levine. I am going to recommend that Dr. Luft recommend to the Board a male, so that we have a male appointed as a Title IX officer as well, so that if we have any male students that come forward that might feel more comfortable with reporting something to a man, that we have a male appointed as well. But other than that, it's a standard policy where there's procedures in place for students who need to report any type of harassment, and that can be done formally, informally, with procedures, written reports generated, and a timeline. So does anybody have questions?
So is there anything new that's changed since, I mean, we had a sexual harassment policy before?
So the new parts are really about a mandatory grievance process where commencing a formal complaint, dismissal of complaints, written notice of a formal complaint, and then also a complaint form is new.
Okay.
Some more the reporting process.
It's more of the reporting process and the actual outline of the process and the timeline.
This is the first reading, this will be on the website, and we will have a second reading and then possibly adopt it at a future board meeting.
Correct, yes.
Now, this is for students as well as staff?
Students.
This is for students?
This one is for students. Under Title VII, generally employees would report if they felt harassed in any way in terms of sexual harassment.
And how do students access this? I mean, they'd have to go on the website or?
No, so one of the things we do, it will be posted on our website, but one of the things we often do is, you know, at age-appropriate levels, when students are older especially, they'll know who to go to or report to a teacher, and then the teacher will identify me, and I would interview a student. We really haven't had to use it very often, thankfully, but it has come up, and usually teachers are the first line in health class, they'll often talk about sexual harassment, what that is, what that looks like. Again, the actual, in the code of conduct, will be the policy, you know, our policies and procedures for reporting sexual harassment.
And don't you find that we have, we've really created a culture of concern and caring and reporting for the sake of caring and protecting?
Hundred percent.
So we may hear about issues from another student who saw something that another student posted or said.
Absolutely, and that tends to be how it goes, where a student will see something posted on Snapchat or on Twitter or whoever else, or hear it in the hallways, and somebody will report it to a teacher or to a hall monitor or to a principal or AP, and then it's circled back, and depending on the severity is when I get involved. Like, it's often handled, you know, again, if it rises to the level of a very formal investigation where I'm involved, there's usually certain identifying markers that are made through the report.
Now, how do we go about training our staff members on this policy?
So we have formal training on investigations and reporting. We take courses at BOSI's, we're trained literally on how to, what to look for, what to say, what not to say, and really just, it's very formal training by attorneys on investigations. Again, we really haven't had to use the very formal process in the past once or twice in my entire 18-year career. So we've been fortunate, but again, it's creating a culture of really raising awareness on treating others with respect and what that looks like and what it, you know, how the language and the way we treat others matters.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're going to move into new business. So I'd like motion one, please.
Resolved on recommendation superintendent schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of John Boniello, a cleaner from the district effective November 17th, 2022, as per document number 5222 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
Ma'am, is this really 2022?
Yes, that is correct.
Making sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Jennifer Hendrick, a lunch monitor at the middle school from the district effective September 1st, 2021, as per document number 54/22 attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Michelle Boulay-Lucier to probationary appointment as an occupational therapist effective September 1st, 2021 through August 31st of 2022, and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a non-directional terms and conditions of employment agreement as per document 55/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
Sorry. So for this one and the next two agenda items, people may recognize or have questions. Ms. Lucier has been a Ms. Lucier has been a district employee for many years, but has hired as an individual contract, and the district was informed that we really needed to hire these individuals through the civil service process, so she was able to complete that process and still be reachable on the test, as well as the next occupational therapist and our physical therapist. So I just wanted to clarify, for those aware, Ms. Lucier has been here, Dr. Lucier has been here for many years, but there are changes with the other occupational and physical therapists, and those are based solely upon the requirements of civil service to hire people based upon where they are in the civil service list.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Julie Messlin to a probationary, probationary appointment as an occupational therapist effective September 10th, 2021 through September 9th, 2022, and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a non-directional terms and conditions of employment agreement as per document number 56-22 prorated attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? These are one year? We have to renew this every year? Is that how that works, or?
So they're now under individual contracts. They're district employees, which complies with the civil service piece, and now they're just sort of, me with myself and the board helps to determine what their sort of contractual increases will be in subsequent years, the same way we treat other employees with individual contracts.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the appointment of Megan Condrin to, as a physical therapist in the district for the 2021-2022 school year, to include probationary period of September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2022.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Eileen Bloom as the in-class instructor for the district's Student Drivers Education Program for the 2021-2022 school year.
Questions or comments?
Just want to provide some quick background. We've received several questions from parents regarding drivers' education programs. What happened is many of the programs in their area actually went out of business, and the state has granted some waivers to provide flexibility. So the way our program here will work is there'll be an in-class component, and Ms. Bloom will be leading that piece for our students, but for the driving hours, parents will actually be able to log the driving hours for their children to comply with that piece of it. So we're just finalizing our paperwork with New York State. There'll be a waiver that the parents will have to sign, but the parents will have the ability to do the driving, in-person driving hours with the students, but they'll be required to complete the in-class portion with Ms. Bloom, who's certified to provide that.
So this hybrid is then, it used to be 50, it used to be 50 hours or whatever, or classroom time, and now that is actually parent-driven instead of school-driven?
Right. So we issued an RFP if any driving schools were interested in partnering with us to take our students physically in the car, and had no response. So at this point, our only recourse is to provide that opportunity to parents.
But it's a positive thing. I'm glad to see it even coming back in a hybrid form, especially for the students.
And over the years, we've often had students talk about being nervous being in the car. We always had two students, but if one was sick or didn't show up for their driving, you know, how vetted was the person, the instructor? Kids were uncomfortable being in the car, so I think this is a win-win.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Christina Eckendee to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 13th of 2021, with a probationary period of 52 weeks from September 12th of 2021 at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Whereas the negotiators for the district and the Putnam Valley administrations, administrators association signed a memorandum of agreement dated August 24th, 2021, for the terms of a three-year agreement effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, as presented to the board at this meeting, document 58/22, whereas by law, the Board of Education is required to vote to approve those monies necessary to fund the provisions of said agreement. Now therefore be resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the terms of the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the PVAA and the district.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent schools to amend the resolution approved by the Board of Education at the meeting of July 1st, 2021, to approve fund balance reserves by increasing the capital reserve an additional $325,532 for future capital projects.
Second.
Questions or comments? Jill was here, I was going to ask her to explain this for the public. I'm not going to attempt to explain it.
I, I can explain. So the district withheld a portion of its state aid in anticipation that the state was going to take back state aid as it had been sort of threatened throughout the school year, so we needed to have those monies set aside. In the end, the state did not recoup that state aid, so what we're now doing is we're taking that money that was set aside, if the state wanted it back, and now just adding it to our capital reserve. For those who don't know, the capital reserve fund is for future projects, like replacing the roof at the high school, which is probably one that's approaching in the near future, and it actually requires voter approval, so this, that fund money is there, could only be used for capital projects, and could only be used if the voters give the district permission to sort of reach into that pot of money and use it to support capital improvement within our buildings.
Thank you. All, do we vote?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 10, please.
Resolved to appoint Barbara Parmley as the voting delegate for the 2021 NISBA Annual Business Meeting to be held on October 18th, 2021.
Second. So I'll be attending the convention all the days. The, actually, the voting is going to be kind of before the convention, which is interesting. It's usually on the last day of the convention. I will be going into the city every day. I know that Jackie's going to be presenting, so I'm just, if anybody wants to attend, you have to register with Maureen, and if you want to ride with me, going, coming, or both ways, you're welcome, too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 11, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the first reading of policy 0113, Title IX, Sexual Harassment Policy for Students, as per document number 59 over 22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Doherty, for your explanation. It made it clear. It's a lot of pages, but I think it's really important. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Okay, we're now going to talk about topics for upcoming meetings.
So the next two meetings are September 21st is the board retreat, so that is not open to the public. It's an opportunity for the board to receive sort of their own professional learning. We've contracted through BOSI's to have a consultant come in and really facilitate that work. It'll take place in the afternoon, and we'll be using the Putnam Valley Town Library just as a space where we can spread out and participate in that learning. Our next public board meeting is Wednesday, September 22nd. Just note that's a change. Typically, it would be Thursday, so the one week was, that one meeting was moved to Wednesday, and we have the external auditors coming to do a report on the fiscal year ending 2021, and as I mentioned before, the Putnam County communities that care, the assessment needs.
So I had made a note that that was one of the things I wanted to follow up on, so I'm glad to know that they're going to come and give that assessment need survey. I also noticed that on the consent agenda, we approved Lauren Soprano to work with a new program, Bridge, which is going to replace Safe Kids, and you know, if you've been at meetings the last couple of years, I keep asking the middle school about the Safe Kids program because I felt it was a really positive program, where middle school students came to the elementary school. And so I saw a kind of like summary from Ms. Soprano about Bridge, the Bridge program, but it doesn't have to be in that month. Maybe she wants to get started. I'd like her to come and share, you know, what she's doing, the students that are in her program, what she sees as their goals, and how, and how it's panning out, because I think it was an excellent program. So I just, I mean, I would like to give her a time to get started, but then I'd like some time to have her and maybe some of her students kind of show us what they're doing, because I think it was a great program, and I'm glad that we're reinstituting it. We also approved teachers working on a seal of civic readiness, which is really interesting to me, but I'm not sure what it is. So, you know, I'd like to hear about that program and how it impacts students in the classroom.
So I can give a quick overview of what the Seal of Civic Readiness is. Very similar to the state's Seal of Biliteracy. It has sort of an academic portion where students have to achieve certain metrics on the academic side in order to qualify, but also a service side, civic participation. So the students earn points for academics and also for service. As long as you have enough points in each of those columns, you would then qualify for the Seal of Civic Readiness. Putnam Valley High School was actually selected as one of the pilot groups across all of New York State, so this is not fully implemented across the street, but we have an opportunity to sort of roll out year one in Putnam Valley High School this year, so it's very exciting.
So will it give them a seal actually on their diploma?
Yep, similar to Seal of Biliteracy. They'll have something on their diploma, likely a lanyard or something for graduation.
But I mean, I, when I see the work of the Seal of Biliteracy, what those students have to do in order to earn that seal, if, I'd like to, I mean, I think I will be amazed at what these students are asked to do and learn, and I, I'd love to hear from them. So maybe later in the year when, you know, when they, when they've gotten going. Any other ideas for topics for upcoming meetings?
Well, I think we're going to have, it would have to be next meeting or the meeting right after that, where we actually go over and review the NISBA proposals.
Right.
So we need to add that to the agenda. I don't know, I haven't seen the email with the book yet, so, but that's going to be coming soon.
Yes, should be.
I'd like to put that on the agenda either for the next meeting.
Usually, I think towards the end of September, beginning of October. Anything else? Okay, we're now moving into the area of public comments on any topic. I will ask that if you're going to comment and you come to the microphone, that you say your name slowly and carefully. Ms. Polino has spent a lot of time after the last couple of meetings trying to figure out the correct spelling of names and, you know, that kind of thing. So we're really interested in preserving what has occurred at meetings, so if you would do that slowly and carefully, we'd really appreciate it, and following the protocols for, that are posted in the hallway and on the back of your agendas, to kind of follow those protocols. So do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment?
My name is Miranda, M-A-R-A-N-D-A, Zocchi, Z-O-C-C-H-I, Gritz, G-R-I-T-Z. Our last meeting left me, as a mom, with a bit of a shock related to my daughter expressing herself. This message is in regards to Dr. Luft's response to my daughter's statement. I was not prepared for my daughter, Delina, to get up and speak, because the first thing she stated to me when we got in the car was, "I do not have to talk. Do I, Mom?" And I said, "No, I want you to go, listen, and learn." In the middle of our meeting, she had said something, she had asked me if she could say something. I encouraged her to be respectful and go up if she wants to. And go up if she wants to. I was nervous for her, as any mom would be with an outspoken, independent child. I have confidence in my daughter, and am one proud mom. What I would never expect is for my daughter to be pushed aside, belittled, and have emotions of feeling secondary to any other child. That, Dr. Luft, is exactly what your words brought forth, to not just my child, but the impression that left others feeling that this was exactly how it came to be. No child left behind, no child before any other child. I think medically, emotionally distraught children should be left for professionals within that field to handle and comment on. For example, school psychologists, guidance counselors, school nurses should be handling those children, not our educators to speak up. Here is my question: Are all children treated equally regardless of race, gender, age, sexual preference? My next question: Do we hold innocence of children on any level of morals, values, and beliefs as a priority within our educational system? Children need to be happy, have fun, and be children. Do you think it is important to not feed their innocence with untruth, but to feed it with love and admiration for each other without a political stance? My daughter is taught in our home that the only skin color she needs to worry about is if someone is blue, yellow, green, red, or gray. Then I want her to respond in a different way and seek adult attention to that situation, albeit 911, or running to the closest adult. Emotionally distraught children seeking guidance counselors on a regular basis needs the attention of medical professionals within our school district, and those designated to care for those children. I could be wrong, but I think you need to focus on our children's educational curriculum and make sure that every aspect of their education is researched. All is approved by you, watching over their educational needs, approved by you. You were unaware of books that were passed to our children. That scares me, heartbreaking. You were unaware of what was entered into last year's yearbook. I am sure there was not accurate information on some figures that were in that yearbook. For one, maybe an innocent child, and yet the choices they make as an adult are not so innocent. I am sure if you educated and researched the situation, individuals would not have been a figure in that yearbook. Part of delegating is making sure that those delegated to are always doing the right thing by our children. BLM posters in our classrooms? Innocence within our adult population does not always exist. I would never say any person to her, any human being, is innocent, and a good human being that I would not want my children looking up to, nor would I say I want my child looking up to people that are in jail until they have proven they have become great people out of a bad circumstance. We all make mistakes. We are human. First time, mistake. Second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, no longer a mistake. It's a way of life. Accountability is a very important factor in mistakes that are made, and my question is, do we have accountability within our school district? Thank you so much.
So I do want to quickly respond in as sincere as possible way. I wholeheartedly apologize if I in any way made your daughter feel as if her comments were not valued. In fact, I wish more students would come to meetings and stand up and speak. I understand how incredibly brave it is for any child in a school district to stand before adults and to speak, and I really wish more students would come do so. So if I said anything that offended you in any way, you have my sincerest apology, and that certainly was not my intention in any way, and if you ever want to sit down and discuss further, I'm happy to meet with you. And if you ever want to sit down and discuss further, I'm happy to meet with you, facilitate that. I'll come to your building, and we could sit down and have a conversation, and you could let me know exactly how you felt and how we could do better, all right? Because I do appreciate hearing from you and any other students here. So, thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Patty Villanova, and first of all, I would like to, really, I'm so proud of all of the new faces that I see here, the younger parents that are taking a stand, taking a principled stand in our community, which is something that this board that is supposed to be representing us is incapable of doing. These are people, these are young people that I don't know. You guys probably, most of you know me. I've been a pain in your ass for like the last 40 years or so between our taxes and everything else, but I'm so proud of these new people, new faces, that are not going to take your BS, because that's what it is. I have fought this Board of Education for so many years, and it's always the same thing. You people get these jobs and you claim, well, really, why do you even, why did you run for the board? What's your point? You're supposed to be representing us, the taxpayers and the parents, not the teachers' union, okay? But you guys don't know that, or either that or you pretend not to know it. Instead, this is, this becomes, I've seen it happen year after year. The people, you get a job, get elected to the Board of Ed, and then you get a nice six-figure job afterwards. Somehow, it works out really, really well. I've seen it. I've been here for so many years, I know what goes on. As far as this critical race theory and transgender theory and all this other nonsense that you are trying to propagandize with these children in the schools, how dare you? That's all I can say is, how dare you? Are you not American citizens? You are, you are our neighbors, okay? You are supposed to be reasonable people. You're supposed to represent what the parents want, what we want, okay? This is anti-American Marxist crap that is being taught under the guise of what, some feel-good equity or whatever the latest term is for it. Meanwhile, in the basic, the basic topics that you're supposed, subjects that our kids are supposed to be learning, basic English language arts, mathematics, you have 60% of the kids that don't, that can't make it, that don't get a passing mark. And this is from the school report card. So, you know, you're not doing your jobs. You're not kidding anyone. I know you're going to tell me, "Thank you very much, Mrs. Villanova, now shut up and sit down." This is the way it's been going for years. You don't really, you're not going to respond, I know. You're going to tell these people some feel-good crap, and it's just going to be business as usual. But you know what? The tide is going to turn, and we are going to run candidates against you people, and we are going to take you on. And maybe you, there's a way to get you impeached, or maybe there's something, because none of you are doing your jobs or following the oath that you were supposed to do. You are not representing the parents of this community and the taxpayers of this community who are paying the bills for ever and ever for this school. So just so you know, we are wise to you, we are on to you, and we, these people, they're not going to quit, okay? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg Brown. I just have, I guess, some questions and comments about the COVID quarantining rules. I appreciate that you said we'll be getting some more information tomorrow, and I look forward to reading it, but I'm concerned about the inequity being proposed vaccinated versus unvaccinated. It is pure and simply discrimination against unvaccinated students to have a different set of rules.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify what those are? What the inequities are?
That, from what the last reading said is that unvaccinated students will be quarantined if they're exposed where vaccinated students would not be.
So, yeah, that's New York State's law, but yeah.
It's not a law.
Well, it is.
It's not a law. Didn't go through our, it didn't go through our legislation. It's not a law.
Those determinations are, sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt, but those determinations are not even made by the school district, they're made by the Department of Health. So that the district has no authority to quarantine anybody. I have zero authority to quarantine anyone. All I do is provide a list to the Department of Health.
The district has a responsibility to represent the students in this district and to push back when needed to be pushed back and to not let any student be discriminated against because of their medical history, why they're, it's actually nobody's business who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated, other than the school nurse. And I, I feel it's completely discriminatory if that is the case. And if that's what somebody in our state, some Department of Health, I'm a nurse, by the way, a pediatric specialty. So I have some knowledge of this. I'm not seeing a ton of kids with COVID in the hospital. I have kids that do get COVID that are vaccinated. So I think the one rule, I'm not saying kids shouldn't need to be quarantined, I'm saying all kids need to be equally treated. So it's your job to make recommendations. You're the experts with our children here at school. The Department of Health is not. And we need you to be there for all the children, not just the vaccinated ones. That's what I'm asking.
I just want to clarify that I have zero expertise in public health. And these are public health decisions that are made by public health experts, and I will follow any of the guidance I receive from the New York State TOH. So if you would like me to share, I have a copy of the guidance right here from New York State that clearly spells out what the rules are for vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I'm happy to share it. If New York State changes those rules and says vaccinated students must quarantine along with unvaccinated, I'll be happy to follow that as well. I am not a public health official. I've never been a public health official. I feel as if I spend 90% of my day pretending to be a public health official, but at the end of the day, when the individuals with the training and expertise to make those decisions, make them, and provide them to the guidance, I would be remiss to do my job if I didn't follow the guidance that was provided by public health.
You do not need to blindly follow anybody, and I'm asking you to please not blindly follow anyone and to ask questions. That's what I'm asking. Ask questions of the experts. They're not always right. Vaccinated children, teachers, anyone can carry COVID and transmit it. So if everyone can transmit it, everyone should be treated equally. That's my stance. And in addition, last year, you know, kids on the bus is a big problem. Last year in Roaring Brook Lake, we had separate buses, so kids wouldn't have to be so crowded on the bus. Some were halfway in the year. A bus driver quit, got fired. I don't know what happened to him, but you very quickly poured all the kids on one bus and left it that way the whole rest of the year. So you need to do your job and make sure that kids can social distance so that they're not, they're not subject to being quarantined because we're not providing them the space they need on the buses and elsewhere. There is things you can do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion, and I wondered whether board members had any comments on any topic.
And I do have not so much on a topic, but I do have a question. I didn't know if it fit into future meetings, but Dr. Luff, where are we with student representatives to the Board of Education? Last year, the bar was set really high, and I hear a lot, in a lot of the public comments today, it's, we need to listen to our students, we need their voice, and they gave us such a fabulous voice and got input from other students. So where are we with that process?
Sure. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Scampoli today. The classes will be getting to have their class elections. They first have to identify their class leaders, and then from that group, he works to identify who the student reps will be. So he asked for two weeks, as soon as the next board meeting, I'm hopeful. I think probably more realistically, we'll have our board reps for the first meeting in October.
Which is usually about the timeframe.
The Putnam County News and Recorder is out today, this week, and there's some adorable pictures of our Putnam Valley kids in here, so I just wanted to let you know to make sure that you take a look, and if you have kids in the paper, make sure you pick up a few copies because they're really cute, so.
What, like what age groups are all the?
Oh, high school, elementary.
Nice.
Teachers, yeah. So it's, they really did a great spread, so I just want to make sure that's pointed out.
Okay, one of the things I, I'm going to try to do is towards the end of the meeting, I just want to let you know, first of all, on August 31st, which was the first back-to-school superintendent conference day, I spoke to each of the three buildings and did a welcome from all five of us. So I just wanted you to know that I, you know, shared, you know, our vision and welcome with the staff. Later that evening, I had a board officer orientation sponsored by West Putt. The video conference set the tone for collaboration and support, and the new, Ms. Spelino arranged the tables more in an arch so like I can see people at the end, and the new setting up of our agenda is all things that came out of that training. And so hopefully, small changes can move us to better discussions and better work. Yesterday, Joe and I met with Susan, who's leading the governance retreat next week, so that she could get our sense of what are some things that we might need to or want to work on. So I think that was positive, and I think that bodes really well for the retreat next week in terms of preparation. I am going to, going to be participating in the interviews for the vice principal of the elementary school Monday and Tuesday next week, and going to the elementary school back-to-school nights. I'm also on Tuesday attending a video conference, if I can remember. I'm having such a hard time remembering video conferences during the day. It's called A Call to Order: How to Manage Contentious Board Meetings. So I'm hoping that, it says that the webinar is going to talk about First Amendment and public commentary, how to structure that period, how to set expectations for decorum, how to turn down the heat if things start to boil over, and how to build community consensus around an issue. So I'm hoping that the video conference will help me as a board leader to ensure that our meetings are, that we hear the public, that the public feels welcome to speak. That doesn't mean we're always going to agree, but we can certainly do it respectfully and politely. Dr. Luff mentioned that Friday, September 17th, is the PTA back-to-school picnic from 5:00 to 7:00. I will stop by for a little bit of time, just to, you know, say hello to parents, and it's going to be a little hard for me. I used to know almost everybody at the picnic. Now I'm not going to know hardly anybody at the picnic, but that's all right. I'm also planning to attend the middle school back-to-school nights. I haven't emailed Travis yet, but I will, just to let him know that I'm coming. Certainly, board members, if you are interested, that's a Tuesday and a Wednesday, oh, we can't go on Wednesday, which is grade seven and eight because we have a board meeting, but we could go Tuesday. And the audit committee will meet prior to our September 22nd meeting, and Jeanette and I are on the audit committee, so we'll be, that's what's coming up in the next couple of weeks for me. So I think it would be helpful if, and I'd like the board to think about, trying to attend as many things as possible. If you're going to a sporting event, if you look at the sports calendar and you say, "Oh, I'm going to go to the game Friday," if you mention those kind of things, then I, then I kind of feel like it's being covered or that we're represented. So please, when you're looking at the calendars, if there's anything that you're going to attend, now that none of us have, Joe pointed out that this is the first time in a long time, none of the board members have students, children, or grandchildren in schools. So if you're going, it would help to know it. If we all kind of shared anything that we're going to do, that way, you know, we can make sure that our students know that we're following them up in and out of school, so. Any other comments on any other topic?
I also contacted the PTA, just let them to make sure that they notify us when they have meetings, so we can, if we're available, send a attendee.
Oh, you did, good. Did she send it? You didn't get it yet?
We don't have, they don't have any scheduled meetings yet.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that would be good.
Somebody call you up to the mic or no?
I have you in the inbox this morning, but I'll be back.
And I'm actually meeting with the PTA executive board tomorrow, so.
And you did respond to me, so.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.